Okay, good.
All right, I'm gonna send it back to you.
Okay.
Or Village of Truanceburg, right?
Village, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so it is 7:01. Monday, August the 10th, 2020, who's counting? Ben Carver will be a few minutes late, so he asked that we not not wait for him, so I will call to order this regular monthly meeting of the Village of Truanceburg Board of Trustees, everyone is present, minus Ben Carver, who will join us shortly. Are there any changes, additions, or deletions to the agenda?
Warden, are we gonna discuss the sewer law?
We certainly can, I have not had a chance to read through it as carefully as I would like to, and I don't know if others have yet or not.
Okay, we can defer it, that's fine.
I think the next step, once we've looked through it, to see if there's anything that we want to change, would be to send it off to Guy for his review.
Yeah, I have a number of markups on mine. Ben, did you, Ben Darfler, I know you were the last one who was trying to read it.
Yeah, I did skim it, nothing drastic jumped out to me. But it was lengthy, so I tried to focus on just kind of the key elements at the end.
There's, I think there's some significant things that we need to put in it, so we'll defer the conversation for now, but we really should have, we're gonna have to discuss it.
I'd love to have that conversation while Deb is still on the board.
So let's plan on a relatively in-depth discussion of the sewer, dress sewer law at our September meeting.
Okay.
After which, we will send it off to Guy for review. Any other changes to the agenda? If not, then item number three is approval of minutes from our July 13th meeting.
I move that we accept the July 13 minutes as presented.
Motion, do we have a second? Second? Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, then, all in favor of accepting the July 13th meeting minutes as presented, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, good. Item four on the agenda is our first public comment period, privilege of the floor number one, I see one member of the public present. If she would like to say anything now is a, now is a good time, Jessica.
Hi, happy hotter than the hinges of Hades, everyone, thanks for being trustees, that's it. Thank you for that time.
It's a balmy heat. We just lost Deb, at least her picture.
I'm eating at my desk.
And here's Ben, evening Ben.
Hello.
Okay, so no other members of the public present, so we will move along to item number five on the agenda, which is was going to be Casey Mastro, I actually don't know Keith, whether we have passed along the Zoom link to Casey?
I did, I had told him that his time on the agenda was at 7:20, so just looking based on the actual breakdown, which I should have, I told him he was first on the agenda, basically, but that we had that is about a 7:20 start, so he might be going more by that.
Okay, that is not a problem. We will come back to him if he, if and when he shows up. In the meantime, we'll move along to item number six, which is reports from representatives, I don't believe I see anyone from the town or and from the county. And I have not heard from either one saying that they would or would not be here, so we will
Guess that's some updates.
Yeah, we will see if they join us at some point. So why don't we jump ahead to board member reports? This was going to be a lengthy agenda, but we seem to be
flying.
Moving right along. Starting with fire, CPZR and farmers market, Ben.
Sure, let's start with CPZR and farmers market upfront, so on the CPZR front, we continue to make forward progress, we have wrapped up the survey, so thank you to everyone who participated in that, had a very sizable number of responses, the number escapes me, I think it was over 200 at this point. We've been kind of walking through those, making some more usable visualizations out of that, trying to pull out any interesting trends or kind of other tidbits that we can find to inform the actual comprehensive plan. I'll say personally, maybe just because this is my interest, the responses on the kind of zoning related ones were particularly interesting, I think we'll see that flow into some of the zoning revision suggestions that come out of EDR. And in general, yeah, the rest of it was fairly straightforward, I don't think anything took us too much by surprise, it was interesting to see people in general enjoy the level of service we have in the village, I think the two or three that stood out as wanting more investment were sidewalks, street trees, and stormwater, which are all top of mind for this board, but I think also encourages us to think a little more deeply about that and how we might even consider adding to those and kind of adding more focus on those items. But all of that will continue to come through in the comprehensive plan, so good movement there, we are wrapping up review of chapter three and diving into chapter four this month, so everything kind of proceeding that way. On the farmers market, things are fairly stable. Haven't heard of anything too traumatic coming out of the farmers market as far as their protocols and procedures, everyone seems to be doing a good job of staying safe there. They've slowly started to open up some music, live music, not trying to draw a crowd in any way, but just adding a little bit of ambiance to the the farmers market has been quite enjoyable just to hear a fiddle and accordion or some small group there, so that's been enjoyable. So with that, we can switch over to fire, I'll start with the calls for for July. We had eight calls in the village, seventeen to Ulysses, four to Covert, zero to Hector, and one mutual aid. There was 288 hours of training, 25.45 hours of fire rescue, for a total of 313.5 hours. We're at thirty calls for the month and ninety-six from the start of the year, which is the start of June. We have a couple of purchases coming up, I was talking with Vicky kind of right before this, not sure we actually need to run anything by the board, we've got some turnout gear in the order of just sigh of 7,500. But I was, Vicky, you had said in that last email that I could approve that, or Warden could, we didn't need to go through the board, is that right, accurate?
It is, because it's like, it's the only place we get turnout gear from.
Right.
Quotes.
Okay.
That, and it is a budget line, so.
Great. So I think we're all set there, we also have a couple, some purchases coming out for wildfire equipment, that's gonna be somewhat offset by a DEC grant. But I think unless Matt, you had an update on that, I think we're gonna hold off until we have final quotes, but I also might be, we might be able to we might not need board approval for that, too.
Okay, yeah, I'm waiting on one quote from Jerome, so, other than that, I have everything else in line.
All right, well, when we get that, we can, I'll, we'll work with Vicky to see if we need to bring it back to the board, or we can just approve it here. And then, the last piece to put, to bring up on a conversation here, over the past couple of months, I've been working with representatives from the various municipalities that we work with, that contract with us for fire protection, to bring together a new cost sharing model to divvy up costs across the various municipalities. So as a kind of a background, we currently split the costs, we take the full budget and we split that up based on who had what percentage of calls over the past three years, you take all the calls, figure out we've got ten percent, they've got twenty percent, they've got thirty percent, that kind of a thing, we split out the budget that way. This has been kind of the way we've done it forever. It kind of conceptually makes some sense until you start digging a little deeper and realizing that a lot of what goes into the fire budget is not specifically related to an actual caller, or driven, I should say, really driven by a call, so we still need a truck, whether we have a call, you know, one call or twenty calls or a hundred calls in a month. Same goes for a lot of the line, a lot of the line items down, down the budget. So we've been working through a cost sharing model, I did a lot of research, seeing what kind of other surrounding areas have been doing, got ahold of the town and the city of Ithaca, they split up that budget based off of assessed value of the coverage area. There's been a couple of different places in the Midwest that have written up documentation and kind of white papers on how they're thinking about it, so kind of collected a bunch of different pieces together and been running that through a small working group with the other municipalities. Where we've landed at this point, though obviously up for conversation with this board, is the idea of looking at the budget line by line and saying, does this line change significantly or materially if we have more or fewer calls, so things like fuel obviously would, a lot of maintenance lines, equipment, apparatus maintenance, those will all be, the more you use them, the more you're gonna pay. Versus lines that are just kind of standard day in and day out regardless of how many calls, so that would be a lot of the building expenses, training, insurance, and apparatus also falls under that, because we typically are not replacing apparatus based on wear and tear, but just on kind of usable life lifespan. The twenty-year cycle is not is not being impacted by that, you could imagine a municipality with a much higher call volume, they might be replacing on a ten-year schedule, that's not where we're at. So we put that all together, we kind of broke it into, what are the two buckets? Rough numbers, fifteen percent of our budget goes towards is driven by calls and eighty-five percent is kind of standard throughout regardless of the volume calls. Then we took those two pieces and said, okay, well, call volume makes a lot of sense to divvy up the cost based on calls. What do we do with the cost based on kind of these fixed costs? And for that, we went with assessed value of the area that's covered. And so we kind of worked that all together and put that in a budget, into a, into a model that we can update every year based on how those budget lines fluctuate, how call models fluctuate, and how assessed value fluctuates on a yearly basis. We'll still keep that three-year look back for call volume, we'll look at a three-year look back of budgets, but you kind of get the point. So that's kind of where the models landed, the idea is to bring this up for the full boards of all the different boards to chat about in September, when we have our budget meeting for fire and EMS. The intent is to then work it into not the budget we'll be talking about in September, but the next September's budget. And then we'll start phasing this in over a five-year period to give the municipalities a chance to adjust. I will send around, I actually don't know if I put it in the Dropbox, an actual copy of kind of the breakdown, the line items, you can see how it all maths out. But that's kind of the philosophical model, so I wanted to bring it here to make sure everyone's had a chance to think about that, if there's any questions or concerns, we can definitely see if we can work them in before September, or, you know, if we need to kind of go back a little bit further, we can, we can do that as well.
So I'd be curious to know just how that changes the breakdown percentage-wise, I mean, is, is someone really getting the short end of the stick on this, on the readjustment, or is it pretty much status quo, how does that play out?
Let me bring it up here and I can just read it off, but I'll also put a copy in the Dropbox for everybody as well, so let me do that. Dropbox, it'll be going up, so once we get to, I'll say it both ways, looking at the five-year phased approach, Ulysses will go up a little under four percent a year, Covert a little, about six and a half, and Hector about five percent a year, and the village is down about seven and a half percent per year. Overall, when you kind of get there all the way after five years, it's about an eight, nineteen percent increase for Ulysses, thirty two and a half for Covert, twenty-five for Hector, and down thirty-seven, thirty-eight percent for the village. Some of those numbers are a little bit, you know, Hector is only, at the end of the day, they're, they're it's less than $5,000 extra, so like that percentage seems larger, because their bill is actually rather modest compared to the way that the budget splits out. But that's kind of the overall look five years out.
What's the dynamic on that, in that group, Ben? I mean, those are like, Ulysses in particular, I mentioned they're the biggest piece of that pie, and all of a sudden they're getting bigger. Has it been like a collegiate kind of an atmosphere, or is it tense, I mean, how are?
I would say Ulysses is struggling the most with it, giving, is kind of the most concerned with where it's going. I think in general, the way we've walked through it, you know, I've been trying to focus this less on where does it get us, and what, more on what is the philosophical grounding for it, as it were, and I think everyone's really bought into the model, it makes conceptual sense as to how we're just really trying to evenly distribute our costs out. You know, the way we currently have it, if you, is, really just doesn't represent what the budget, where the budget spend comes from. And when you look at compared to where this newer model, which I think more accurately represents the actual cost, it means that some people are overpaying and some people are underpaying, we really should rectify that, so I think people are kind of philosophically bought in. Obviously, when you look at, you know, an increase of $10,000 a year for Ulysses over five years, right, and that's every, every year, it's increasing another ten-ish or nine or so. There's, there's concerns there for sure. So I know we've been a lot of the same conversations we've had kind of year in and year out, I think we'll have again in September around, you know, where can we find places to gauge more input from the municipalities, where can we be more transparent with our replacement cycles and our decision-making there to bring people into that, I think people have appreciated the working group model, the smaller working group model, working through this and kind of understanding it and building it as a, as a group. So I think we can find opportunities for that kind of work going forward, and I'm sure we'll also have a conversation about, you know, what do we do with budget overruns and underruns, and how do we manage that kind of stuff, which is a perennial conversation, I think that will just have more to it this time around. Any other questions around that?
No questions, I do appreciate all the work you put into it, Ben, I think it's long been a, it's long been a concern about that I've heard for a long time, i- is the village in fact subsidizing the cost of the departments to the other towns, and I think, at least using this model, it appears that we have been to a certain extent, so if we're able to trim back some of that cost percentage to the village, that'll be, that'll be a good thing, I will say that it I've been at times less than eager to discuss the usage of overages and reserving that, or using it to a future year's budget. This actually would lend itself more to doing that, if we are not now subsidizing other towns from a cost perspective, then, you know, if we are under budget, then it makes sense on, on that percentage basis to make sure that spending from the towns is, is used for the towns, I can't bind boards to that, but at least conceptually, it makes, makes a lot more sense in my mind. So, look forward to that discussion with the towns next month.
Well, with that, I think that's it for my report.
Okay, good. EMS, speaking of budget remodeling, EMS, youth, and street tree.
So we have not remodeled our budget or allocation system, but we are working on a budget now, I've been a little bit late to the party, I just started looking at it, but Vicky and Chris had put together you know, an early draft, and now we've started going back and forth. Hopefully, we can share that with the rest of the sport very soon. It is, you know, I mean, the real obvious problem is just COVID, I'm afraid that I think the village were comparatively well off, or at least comparatively less exposed, I think, to the financial implications of this, I mean, obviously not that we're not exposed, but, but relative to the towns who I think get a lot more aid, have a lot more on the line when it comes to economic activity. I'm a little bit concerned about how that, how that goes that meeting and what they'll be able to stomach, because I know, you know, just working with the town of Ulysses and the context of youth programming and that kind of thing, that their budget is, I think for them at this point, an optimistic budget would be zero change, so no raises to anyone, no you know, not filling any open positions, none of that, so I, I did ask Vicky to put together a budget that is closer to a zero percent increase, or at least something along those lines, so that we can see what it looks like. And we'll just, we'll have to go from there, I'll obviously share that when we get somewhere and probably I'll sit down with Warden and talk about it in depth at some point. Oh, and then calls, we had sixteen in the village, oh, now I've lost sixteen in the village, which makes one hundred and forty-four for the year to date, so ten transports this month, almost a hundred for the year. Other than that, and a couple of executive session issues, that's about it for EMS. For the tree committee, I don't have much of an update. We, one tree has come down in the village, one should be in the next couple of days, the one that's coming down in the next couple of days is really one that I feel has been long overdue, so I'm excited to see that progress. Other than that, it's moving along, everyone is getting estimates, sort of pursuing, pursuing it as they can. And hopefully sorry, I just got a very strange text from Ann Corwin. Who says she can't log into the Zoom meeting, by the way.
I got a similar email from Casey, I just sent him the, I just copied and sent the meeting invite again.
Does anyone have Ann's email address to send that? Anyway, so, the tree committee, the one thing I wanted to bring up is what we do next year, so obviously, we're not sure how to if we'll even have money in our budget for next year. But I've been getting a lot of questions about, is this tree eligible for those funds, can we do something, you know, this tree is also a problem. And so looking forward, I wanted to see if there's any general feedback or any ideas about how we do that. Our committee has been going back and forth with the idea of either doing a similar thing where we identify the most dangerous trees in the village and do what we did this year, or we could also open it up more broadly and basically just say we have X amount of money and have applications from homeowners. There's also maybe sort of a hybrid approach where we send out letters like this tree, we recommend that you apply for assistance with this tree, that kind of thing. All in all, still, all of that is really staying with the very gentle approach and not the punitive, this is your liability, you must do this. So I just wanted to get thoughts, how it, how you would all feel about opening that up widely, if you feel strongly one way or another, or anything along those lines. It's also worth noting that we don't have any plans for planting yet, we're not even close, so if street trees are an issue in the comprehensive plan that everyone seems to think are something we should be doing, then that's a, that's a whole nother discussion, but sorry, Deb, what were you saying?
I was just going to voice my opinion, that I believe the ones that are critical to be taken down should be funded first.
Yeah.
You know, it's nice that people want to take some proactive steps before they get there, but let's keep keep the eye on the prize and make sure that we're safe first.
Okay.
Warden.
Yeah.
I'm sorry to interrupt, it looks like Mark isn't having a trouble getting in, and so, yeah, well, Ann. And Kate, so people are having trouble getting in, I'm not sure what's going on.
I just emailed the link again to Ann, I think, is this Casey that just joined?
Yeah.
Yep, there he is.
Yeah.
Hello?
Hello?
Can folks hear me all right?
Is this Casey, is that you on the 716 area code?
It is, yes, sorry, I had some technical difficulties. Thanks Keith for sending me some updated info.
Okay, good. Tammy, you said that it's Mark that can't get in?
Yeah, I just resent the link to him, too.
Good.
So I'll just jump into youth then, if there's no more thoughts about the tree committee, although I do just want to say that if anyone in the public happens to be watching, or if anyone has any ideas later on, I would, you know, we're very open to thoughts, any you know, I don't think there's any bad ideas, we've never really done a program like this in the village, so this is a bit of a trial. So far, I think it's going well. But we are certainly still open to any input or thoughts that are, that's out there. So moving on to youth. There is, as it turns out, a summer employment program this year that has been running essentially children, or youth, rather have been assigned to outdoor jobs, so largely farms and geez, I don't have the list with me, but a number of things that are outside to really try and make it so that they can have the work experience, they can you know, this is the first job for all of them, so do all of that, but do it outside and be safe. So that was really you know, a lot of work went into figuring out if it was possible and how to do it safely, so I'm really pretty happy that that did work out. Also, Will Glennon has started doing some smaller outdoor programs, so there's a tennis program right now, there's a number of other things he's been working on, maybe reinstituting the outdoor movies at the conservatory. So there should be a number of smaller programs like that moving forward. And then another thing, which I mentioned at our last meeting, is just that there's likely to be a fairly large programming vacuum when school starts up again, just because so much of that will be distance learning, so just again, a call for any ideas or thoughts that anyone has on a way that we could, as a municipality, or that the village could support Will or Ethan in their endeavors to do that, any thoughts would be, would be greatly appreciated. But that's about it.
Okay, any questions for Ben, actually, Ben Darfler, you had mentioned something about a conversation you and Ben had had about the sidewalk.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I thought that was further down the agenda, but I wasn't actually looking at the agenda. So I did bring up the, the tree, with the tree committee, the idea of also being a sidewalk committee. And there was sort of a resounding, no. Which is, to some degree, I think, a little bit unfortunate, I mean, it that was the easiest option. But I raised the idea with Ben, and he suggested, and I agree that we should obviously talk about it with the board, but the idea that maybe a small committee the idea that maybe a small committee, maybe just Ben and I, Alan Vogel certainly should be involved, and maybe one or two other people at most could form form a committee that would essentially be targeted at the long-term planning. You know, five year, what are we going to do? How is this going to work? This sort of administrative approach? Um, and that that might be the easiest thing. Obviously, another committee is a struggle for everyone, and it sounds like that. That's about five hundred hours of of village-related work in on a weekly basis already, but wanted to get thoughts, see if anyone had any alternatives. And maybe Ben has more to share. I'm certainly not summarizing completely our conversation.
No, I think, I think that felt about right. The I think one realization is that we've kind of missed our window of summer build this year, unfortunately, um, just with everything that's been going on. Uh, especially would have been difficult to get volunteers together for that, I think. Uh, so hopefully, this would give us a runway into next year and could start as simply as just deciding on our next, our next spot, um, and working with DBW to schedule that work in. Um, and starting to have a better sense of what's the long-term vision for. Uh, as I kind of mentioned with the with the comprehensive plan, this really is a key focus that people want us to invest in. So how do we make this more of a a proper village endeavor? I think that goes maybe a step above what we've kind of put it together in the past. Um, there's value, obviously, in having the kind of volunteer approach, and I think we might want to see if we can include bits and pieces of that, especially via the board, maybe more so than actually being out there for a week at a time, which is not something that everyone can really commit to. But I I'm I'm interested in, you know, starting with something small, and then we can see where that grows. Uh, so I appreciate it, Ben, raising a hand to to help out with that. And I think the both of us, along with Alan, and and if we want to bring in a couple other folks, we could at least get a a leg up on next year and then see where that kind of grows into.
Thank you, man.
Yeah, and the other thing, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Did you want to backtrack on the agenda a bit now that we have the?
Yep.
Go ahead.
Uh, and actually, I think as I'm looking around here, I think we might have looks like the meeting link is different on the agenda than it is as published. So that would explain why some folks are having trouble getting in. So we'll need to make sure, Tammy, that we get the um, recording posted.
I just sent the, I just sent the right link to Ann Corman.
She's in already.
For members of the public who um, may want to watch after the fact, we'll have to make sure that link to the recording is is well-publicized. So we'll go back to uh Casey uh from NIPA. The uh, the floor is yours.
Good evening. So Keith had asked me um, last week board meeting. Uh, I did between now and then get confirmation uh from our engineering group that the village's ninety percent design for the street lighting project is completed. The Conso, the implementation contractor on the twenty ninth I sent that document. Well, they reviewed it internally, sent that document to NIPA for final review. Um, I did get confirmation that that has been comments and questions from NIPA have been incorporated. So at this point, NIPA is going to be looking to uh through Mark Runke, who's the project manager for looking to schedule a ninety percent the board to go over uh the specificity of that design and our findings and our recommendations uh and get the board's um comments and questions to implement that into the hundred percent design, which will be reflected in the final contract before installation. So we should be expecting, you know, some time here in the next you know, two weeks or so, certainly this month, um, to be setting up some dates with you uh however many folks want to be involved in that uh to go over the ninety percent design. So we would like to send that report to you in advance of that. Review it. Uh, the reports are substantial um from an economics, financial, you know, standpoint, but also from a technical photo. We want to give you a little bit of time to at least absorb some of the information before we hold a ninety percent design review meeting to make it a little more, you know, more of a robust meeting. Do I need to focus out on the board? Have any, any questions about the timing regards to that? Or um, any questions with regard to, you know, how we got to this point?
Yeah, Casey, so once we have meetings scheduled, how many meetings do you anticipate? And then what would the timeline be from the uh, the time of the meetings to one hundred percent design?
So I only anticipate one meeting between now and hundred percent design, and that would be the ninety percent design review. So um, the ninety percent design review uh is the opportunity for customers to weigh in. You know, their their comments, I mean, net analysis, um, and you know, from the bulk of the design report. You know, that is a a good opportunity to discuss specific, you know, specifics with regards to roadways. Where roadway more dim, um, more bright, you know, those types of specific street-by-street opportunities. We would reflect that feedback in our report, and then we would transpose that and and you would see that reflected in the hundred percent design. So just to be specific, one meeting between now and a hundred percent design. The ownership transfer um process uh is really the only thing that we don't have control over, though I guess that and the weather um with regards to when we're going to actually begin installing. So um, we don't anticipate any administrative roadblocks between NIPA fulfilling its commitment to completing the hundred percent design and installing LEDs other than finalizing the ownership transfer through the utility. So with regards to that, Mayor Hart, do you um recall whether the the village had received the pole lease agreement and the purchase agreement from NISEG and reviewed them and signed them?
We've received several things from NISEG. I don't, to be honest with you, remember which was which.
Right, I understand. So there's a lot of kind of uh moving parts with regards to the Public Service Commission order. So the way that um the way that the process works is um, you you initially had utilized some template language that we provided, and you asked NISEG for a purchase price of those assets, which then um they sent to you. Upon receipt of that letter, um, we would respond to NISEG and say either, um, well, first, we would review the document, review the price, make sure it's in line with uh average unit costs in NISEG territory, make sure, you know, it's not some outright outlandish price, uh which I don't believe that it was. Um, and then we would respond to NISEG uh via email, just say, yes, we want to proceed, um, at which point we would request the pole lease agreement and the pole purchase agreement. When NISEG sends you the asset price letter, they will also include the full registry of fixtures. So they'll have a list of all your fixtures, what the quantities are, what the wattages are, what streets they're on. So that's very, that was very important uh in our design. So I know that we have that because we couldn't complete the design without it. So uh, as I suppose, as as an action item, and I can um, check back with Mark uh to first thing in the morning as well on on his records. Uh, but we'd want to check on whether NISEG sent you those two agreements. Um, if they did, you would want to have those documents reviewed. Now, granted, they are templates, so they're not specifically written to the village of Truensburg. I mean, essentially, they're very boilerplate, but still, you'd want to, you know, have those reviewed. And when those documents are signed by the village, we would send them electronically to NISEG, and they would um countersign them. Now, the only timeline that is not specifically laid down by the Public Service Commission as far as when utilities need to do what within a specific timeframe is in countersigning those two documents. For some reason, it's a loophole. I don't know why there's no specific bullet in the order regarding when they need to countersign. In general, I've seen those documents countersigned and returned as quickly as two business days and as long as two weeks. So that would be the conservative estimate on when they would countersign those documents and send them to the Public Service Commission. So by the Public Service Commission order, however, even if you receive a countersigned copy within, say, two weeks, by the Public Service Commission Order seventy A, NISEG has sixty business days to actually submit the documents to the Public Service Commission. So that's approximately three months, let's say. So let's assume uh that they get all that done by the end of August, and they and they um countersign everything. I would assume that the Public Service Commission would have those documents in their hands sometime in November. So once the Public Service Commission receives the documents, um, technically, there's a forty-five day comment period because this is a public asset. But I haven't seen a PSC turnaround time take that long since like the beginning of the marketplace, which was you know, three years ago or so. The Public Service Commission is pretty well-versed in this sort of thing at this point. I would expect a much quicker turnaround at this point. So I I'm I'm fairly confident that you would still see a ownership transfer um in this calendar year. Um, but because of weather, you know, we still do installs uh during the winter. But to be as conservative as possible, you know, this community, as well as the remaining communities in Tompkins County, to be you know, to be conservative, somewhat realistic, I would expect installation of the fixtures to be as soon as spring hits in March two thousand twenty-one.
Okay.
Now, that's a very, that's about as conservative of an of a timeline as I can muster. The uh, the goal obviously would be to do it as fast as possible. There are some cogs in this, obviously, that I I can't control, you know, what the utilities are doing, how fast the Public Service Commission uh can turn around the approval. Um, but as far as NIPA is concerned, we will have a working finalized design well in advance of the timeline that I just outlined for you.
Great. Anybody, anybody else have any questions for Casey?
Casey, do you, have you, has NIPA met its kind of needed quota for the the minimum amount of work for the county?
Uh, we don't really have a quota per se. We just have the participants, at at least for this project, the participants in the county, and we're frankly, we're just moving as quickly as we can get ownership transfers turned over. Um, so we're in the process right now of, we finalized the design, um, and I presented to uh both the village of Dryden and the village of Kuga Heights. And we're now in the process of doing the same thing for for you folks, for Caroline, for Freeville, and the other participating entities. So um, the village of Truensburg, as well as the four or five other um participating entities outside of Kuga Heights and the village of Dryden are all having their designs finalized or in final review. And we are anticipating scheduling those ninety percent design review meetings in total for the remainder of the county uh in the next coming weeks.
Okay.
Yeah, the only, the only thing that's been, the only thing that's been particularly, I think, difficult is um is maintaining a, you know, we've been trying to maintain as close as possible of a ownership transfer timeline for each individual community as as possible. The trouble is, you know, just some folks um, just, you know, have other agenda, and obviously, COVID nineteen has changed the entire outlook of twenty twenty. And, you know, that that has been a little bit hard to wrangle. Um, but we feel like um you know, to the best of our ability with everything that's been going on, we are absolutely at the end of uh what we consider a very well illuminated tunnel, and we're looking to close close out these design projects here in the next, you know, this month, if not early September.
Great, thank you.
So one question I have is, as far as public input goes, the ninety percent review meeting that you're talking about, is that does that generally go, is that with this board, or is that a public meeting? Should we be coordinating our own public outreach, or is that meeting? Do you envision that as as a public meeting, or is that with this board, or with, you know, select individuals? I mean, how does that usually go?
The way that I've done this in the past is I would not I would not suggest opening up a comment on the ninety percent design report open-endedly to the public. What I would suggest is reviewing the ninety percent design report with this board. Finalizing that report with this board, and once that is agreed upon, then I would suggest holding a public meeting. I can attend that meeting. I did so with the village of Kuga Heights. It went very well. Um, the public was very receptive. I think doing it this way provides a lot more direction with regards to where the village is going. The decisions that were made based on specific engineering photometric analysis and 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 database recommendations. As a, you know, because not everyone in the community is as educated on the topic. And I think that if you leave it, if you leave a report open-ended for review, I think it might be counterproductive. That's just my experience.
So another, I'm, my concern is primarily, you know, I've had a number of residents say, you know, this light is too bright, or this light is X, Y, Z, and that that kind of stuff, we can, we can accommodate essentially after the installation is done, right? Am I understanding that right, that they can be?
That, yeah, that's one of the benefits of the digital asset management control system, is you have the ability, light by light, throughout the entire village, to control the power output to each individual light. So as you get, you know, as you get constituent feedback, uh, because we install the lights at eighty percent power, not one hundred percent power, because there's no optical difference between the two, you have leeway both for more, you know, more power output, less power output at each individual light to begin handling any and all scenario that you may have, whether a light is too bright, whether a light is not bright enough. And we find ninety-five percent of the time, just altering the power output, which is as quick as a login and click of a button on any user interface or smart device. Um, you handle a majority of those, you know, uh, village you know, that village feedback just through changing the power output of each individual fixture. So some of this feedback you've already gotten, right? So 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 part of the, part of the purpose of the ninety percent design review is that some of that not base knowledge that you have been getting and that you have from your constituents already, those need to be addressed and 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 reflected in the in that hundred percent design, right? So if we have a ninety percent design and for some reason are not able to capture feedback like that, um, you know, the goal would be to capture it now and reflect that in the hundred percent design before we install. Because that might have some influence on on the recommendation for wattage that we have at some particular location within the village. But again, it's one of, that's again, um, outside of installed wattage, that's really where part of the digital asset that's really where part of the digital asset management control system really shines is your ability to handle the way in which you communicate this asset to the constituents in the village. And it really changes the nature of this from, you know, reactive, you know, to a light is out, constituent lets the mayor's office know, for example, and then you call NICEG and then NICEG responds at some timeframe that's convenient for them to, um, a proactive digital response where you're notified via email and text message due to the digital control software before a constituent even mentions it. Um, and you're able to proactively alter power output, um, to each individual fixture at the click of a button.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Last question for me, Casey. Can you give us a, a reminder, a refresher about the, um, mechanism for funding? When, 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 and how the, uh, dollars actually change hands and from home?
Sure thing. So there's going to be a couple, um, exchanging, exchanges of, of funds here. The first will be, uh, paying the utility for the assets. So the, again, the power authority, uh, fronts as much or as little of this project as you feel is necessary. Um, for example, the Village of Kuga Heights is financing the project except for the purchase of the fixtures. They're paying for those themselves. Um, but, you know, local governments have the opportunity to finance this in total. So let's say you're financing this in total. What we would do is, uh, when we got a little bit closer to the ownership transfer timeline, we would, um, Mark will work with you to set you up as a vendor in our system. And we will automatically transfer the funds for the purchase of the assets directly to the Village of Truanceburg. And you can pay for the assets with those funds and they will be rolled into the project, uh, financing, the total project cost. So the village, uh, will not be responsible for anything to the power authority until the project is completed. The reason for that is that we want you to be paying, uh, for NIPA's fronting of the money through operational savings only, right? That's the goal here is to pay for the project through savings, not through an additional, you know, capital cost. Um, so once the project is completed and we have done our engineering commissioning of the project and you have signed off on that project as complete, then you would be responsible for paying, uh, you know, beginning to pay the financing, uh, if you choose to finance through the power authority. Um, we show very conservative, um, as everything NIPA does is very conservative. Uh, we show very conservative financing rates during the design of four percent. So right now, you know, I know that the variable rate, for example, is two point seven nine percent. Um, but we show four percent just to be as conservative as possible. Um, you know, my suggestion to municipalities is if you, for whatever reason, can bond, you know, cheaper than that, that is an option for you, right? So NIPA financing is just one, it's like a tool in your tool belt. You know, it's something that can be taken advantage of. It doesn't, certainly doesn't have to be. NIPA is very flexible, um, with how folks want to finance projects. We are also very flexible in the repayment of those projects. Um, you know, there's no, um, there's no financial penalty for lump sum payments. There's no, there's no penalty for upfront payments. There's no, you know, again, we're very, you know, very, very flexible. So however the village, um, you know, wants to, you know, make those payments as a percentage of your overall savings, you can, you can do that.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Casey? Well, I do appreciate your time and certainly appreciate the, uh, the update and the detail. We will look back and I'm, I'm actually looking at my email. We'll look back and, uh, see if NICEG could get those agreements to us or not. Uh, I have a feeling.
I'll, I'll, I'll double check on my end too, Mayor.
I have a feeling they sent us the paperwork for their LED conversion process.
Oh, I have no, I have no doubt about that. I'm sure, I'm sure they did. I'm sure.
I, I'm not sure they sent us the, the lease purchase piece, but we will, uh, we will confirm.
We did have a purchase agreement. Uh, and then I think we requested another one because the thought was the original one may have expired, uh, from twenty eighteen. And so that's the one I think we're trying to track down right now. So we just have to determine if.
So that, so, so that would be, Keith, you're, you're talking about, you're talking about the purchase price, correct? The actual asset sale price?
Yes. Yeah.
All right. Let me actually.
I remember it being thousand something dollars or something like that.
I'm gonna look in my files right now. Let me see what I can come up with. Give me one second, folks.
Sure.
Village of Truanceburg. Okay. I have a sale proposal, uh, for the Village of Truanceburg dated, uh, January fourteenth, two thousand twenty, which would be, I think, the most updated version. So I don't have any copies of the poll lease agreement or poll purchase agreement. So Mayor, what I would suggest is looking back, uh, around mid-January. Uh, I do, and we can confirm, um, looks like the date you received it might have been the fifth of December, two thousand nineteen, updated Village of Truanceburg sale proposal from NICEG. So what we want to do is, uh, take a look at that, um, look at the rate, you know, take the cost and divide it by the number of fixtures. Make sure that the cost per fixture isn't like outlandish. I don't recall thinking that it was, but I'll double check that. And then what we would want to do is reach out to NICEG and say, we agree to this. Please send us the poll lease agreement and the poll purchase agreement. So, uh, my guess from at least the files that I have is that we have to do that. Uh, but if you for some reason have record that you've done it already, please by all means, uh, just, uh, you know, CC me on and or forward it to me or, you know, just for my records.
Okay.
Yeah, whenever I've tried to get stuff from Tad Palmer, he tells me that he can't do business with me, so. Says.
Really?
He has some line about it has to come from the mayor or the clerk or something like that, so. But, yeah, that's, that was.
That's ridic, that's absolutely ridiculous.
That was one of his last.
I don't, I don't understand any basis for that.
So.
All right. Well, if you, um, Keith, if you have any documentation via email of any kind of correspondence like that, um, I would, I would want to put you directly in touch with the Department of Public Service because that is, uh, outlandish. You are a representative of the Village Board of Truanceburg and there's absolutely no reason why, um, you shouldn't be able to be, uh, to represent your village and receive information. So if they're using that as a tactic to slow the process down, I would want to get, uh, the, this Department of Public Service involved.
I have an email to that effect from last week because I was CC'd on his non-response to Keith, so.
All right. Mayor, if you could, could you forward that? Would you mind forwarding that to me, please?
Sure.
You know, maybe they will send these two agreements promptly and this will be a mute point, but, um, you know, we are, we are actively, our regulatory group at NIPA is, 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 is jumping all over things like this because, um, these are tactics that are being used by the investor-owned utilities that are, uh, frankly, just inappropriate. Um, there's a specific order with which, uh, these investor-owned utilities are governed by the Public Service Commission to be, um, uh, essentially friendly and helpful in this process. And if they're not, then, uh, we need to let folks know about it. That's my opinion anyway, you know, I don't know how you folks feel about it, but to me that is, um, um, irresponsible behavior on the part of the investor-owned utility.
Well, I guess you get so used to being disrespected by NICEG that you just stop paying attention.
Yeah. Well, Keith, you and I have talked about this for a long time, but this is, you know, you're not the first or will you be the last municipality to deal with this? And it's just, I think everyone's had it.
Okay. Well, thank you, Casey.
Yeah.
Thanks, Casey. Appreciate the time.
It's my pleasure. Uh, Tammy, I see you have your hand up there. You have a question?
Uh, yeah, Worden and Keith, I just sent you the December sixth email that Reese received from Mr. Palmer.
Okay. Uh, Casey, I'm just sending you the email I got last week from him as well.
Thank you. All right.
All right. Thanks again, Casey.
It was my pleasure. Have a nice evening, everybody.
You too.
Bye-bye.
Okay. So circling back around to, uh, item number six on our agenda, which was reports from representatives. I do see that Anne and Mark are with us now. Apologies for any confusion to do with the, uh, various links that we had published for tonight's meeting. Um, so whichever one of you would like to go first, uh, please feel free.
I can go.
Go ahead, Mark.
Don't have too much. Um, just wanted to make sure people knew we're having a public hearing tomorrow, which will be one of the last steps, uh, in our, um, zoning amendment process for the Lake Shore Zone and the Conservation Zone. Might not affect too many of the village residents, but maybe some of them have property down there. Um, so it's the end of a rather lengthy process. Uh, and that'll be at six thirty tomorrow ahead of our regularly scheduled town board meeting. Um, so that's the, the official public hearing. We've already done the public information session and had quite a few meetings where we've discussed it. Um, if anybody has any questions about that, I could try to answer more. Um, I heard Ben talk about, uh, the rec programs. I don't think I have much else to say about that. Oh, uh, apparently we have a software, a, a desk. Um, I, I haven't seen this, but, um, Will is open to sharing. Uh, if, if there's any programs that need registration and you guys are looking for a software to use to, uh, sort of make those registrations happen online, um, we would be willing to potentially share that program or let, let you guys make use of it if that was something that was interesting to you. Let's see. Uh, you guys talked about, uh, the fire. Obviously, we've been talking about that quite a bit, quite a bit. And, you know, Ben was correct, we're probably the town that has the, the most sort of concerns about the, uh, eight to nine thousand, uh, a year increase in our budget over the next five years. I think one of the major concerns is if, if it's all going to be split, even Stephen, um, you know, if everybody's having sort of an exact equal pay-in based on, uh, assessment and, and use of services, then shouldn't there be some sort of shared, um, you know, decision-making process? I think that's been brought up several times. Um, that, that might be something that would be a sticking point for some, uh, in, in the case of us having to pay, you know, quite a bit more per year. Uh, so just putting that out there. See, do I have anything else in my notes? I think that's about it.
Mark, do you have any, uh, news on the Cemetery Road Bridge?
Um, nothing new, um, other than, yeah, I'd have to go, go back and look at it. We haven't, we didn't discuss it in the last meeting. Um, so we'll have a meeting tomorrow night and there may be some updates, uh, there. I know it's moving forward. It's definitely moving forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mark? Okay. Well, thank you, Mark. Uh, Anne, I believe, is Anne still here? Yes, she is.
Hi, Worden and everybody. Thanks for, uh, getting us, Mark and I, the, uh, link to get into the meeting. I thought maybe you canceled it and, uh, or, you know, we're just, uh, trying to have a quicker meeting without having us municipal representatives here, but I understand. So, yeah, so I'll start with the COVID related stuff and then I'll get into, uh, the cheerier fiscal stuff. The, um, COVID numbers are down, uh, fairly down right now. We have thirteen, which I don't think is actually that bad considering, you know, that we've had a few, uh, people have come back from out of state and gone to parties, uh, last month. And, uh, so people seem to mostly be recovered from that incident. And, uh, we do have a lot of students that are already here in town, um, from the various colleges because they have apartments here and, uh, they have been required to get tested twice. Uh, the Cornell ones are twice a week and so is the staff. So our numbers, you might see spiking if you're going to the website, the Health Department website, you might see the number spiking of people waiting to get the results. The other day it was five hundred and something and people are usually getting their results within, uh, twenty-four hours. So they're doing a fast turnaround even with that high number. So if you see a high number, that's probably the students. And, um, so the, you might have heard Cornell changed how they're, uh, allowing the students to come back. They were gonna monitor their, all their quarantine and give them a place to stay or get a place for them to stay. But, uh, they're now leaving it up to the students to do that. So we're pretty concerned about that. Um, but we also have limited ability to influence the college, but we have been expressing our concern about that and also ramping up, uh, staff to make sure we can do our contact tracing and make sure there's adequate testing. Let's see. We, uh, the COVID testing site, they, uh, through the health, they have now had to start charging if folks hadn't seen that information. So if you don't have symptoms or you don't, haven't been exposed to somebody with an, with a positive test, you now have to pay ninety-nine dollars. So we are scrambling with, uh, the health, with, uh, our health department, with, with FEMA, with Kuga Health to figure and New York State to figure out if we can get FEMA to reimburse, which they're supposed to be, but it's really hard to work with FEMA. It's hard to get them to answer anybody back. So we're gonna see there is, they are supposed, FEMA is supposed to be paying seventy-five percent of it. And then twelve and a half percent would be the county and then twelve and a half percent would be the state. But we're gonna try and put all that in place to see if we can get, uh, the tests paid for so that people could go get tests. Um, but that will, uh, cost us some money, so just, which delves into the fiscal stuff. That would cost us, uh, somewhere plus or minus a million dollars a year just to pay our twelve dollars and fifty cents of that. And, uh, and then the colleges should hope, are hopefully gonna keep paying for their students. And then as far as our finances for the county, right now, we're looking at, uh, six to eleven million deficit for this year and can, and expect to have the twenty percent reduction in our state aid uh, permanent for the year. And then we don't know what's gonna happen next year with the state. The sales tax for June was down thirty-one point six four percent for the whole county. And, but for the quarter, it was only down fifteen point three seven percent. And the municipal share of the monthly for June was three point five five percent that it was down. And for the quarter, it was only down fifteen point four one percent. And we've, uh, put out, uh, early retirement options for people as a way to cut our expenses and reduce our staff because we're looking at, you know, could be minimum four or five years before the economy fully recovers. And, uh, so we had, we have twenty-five to twenty-eight people that are gonna take early retirement from the county. Some of those will have to replace because they're really essential, but that will help. But that will help. And uh, we're finishing hiring up uh our chief equity diversity officer, which is going to uh be working on all kinds of issues. Um, and that position was not going to be filled because of COVID and the economic turn down, but with all the other stuff that's been happening, uh, people have more of an awareness and a need for uh diversity and inclusion, uh, staff and programs. And uh, so we want to make sure that that position is filled and that uh we should be hiring somebody in the next week or two. And I think that's it.
Any, uh, any questions for Anne? Uh, Anne, you mentioned the twenty-five to twenty-eight people who are being offered early retirement. Is is that public? Is there a list as to what those positions are, uh, which will be re-refilled with?
That, yeah.
Which positions might potentially be eliminated versus what will be rehired?
No, the um, because the um, we're waiting for the fourteenth, which is this Friday for any last minute folks to apply for that. So that's our deadline, uh, August fourteenth. Um, then we'll come out with that that list. I haven't even seen it yet. There been away in a few days.
Okay. Any word on um, or have you heard anything about New York State offering uh any early retirement packages for folks who may only have a few years left uh until they're eligible?
No, I haven't. Um, but that could be something we could uh push for. Have you heard of, have you heard of anything at all yourself?
I had heard, I, I've heard several people clamoring. I had heard um that there may, and I, and I actually don't remember whether it was a bill that was introduced in the state senate or it was lip service from a state senator who wanted to introduce a bill. That that part's fuzzy to me, but it sounded like there was some legislation um being considered possibly to offer. Depending on which retirement system and which tier, uh, some early incentives, but I I haven't heard anything more uh beyond that.
Okay, I'll ask, ask around. We have a a committee now that's just dealing with uh reaching out and advocating and uh for at state and federal level now. So uh, Martha Robertson is the chair of that. So I'll reach out to her and ask her about that.
Okay, great. Any other questions for Anne? Well, thanks, Anne. Much appreciated.
You're welcome.
Um, getting back to our board member reports, I believe Deb that you're up next, BPW Water and Sewer.
And I'll be really quick. So they've, they've actually had a great summer to keep up. I mean, they're, they are cleaning out ditches. They were on Pennsylvania Avenue this uh today. Um, there's a significant amount of effort just trying to keep everything clean, but cleaning on those ditches will help with the stormwater. Um, they've had a couple valve replacements. We know that, we know that um, there was brown water, I guess. I guess it was two weeks ago now. Um, we're expecting another one within the next week, just uh to make people aware. They're still in the um, does season, uh, looking for quotes for the ditch project, for the ditches on Seneca Road and Prospect uh that you'll discuss. I think that's later in our gen- agenda, isn't it, Worden?
Yes.
Okay, we'll discuss that later. And um, that's about all I have. And then there was the sewer law, but we're gonna take that offline for next.
Yeah, give us a chance to uh finish our review of it. Uh, any questions for Deb? Okay, up next is Keith, police and T A C C.
Uh, so start with police, uh, two hundred and ten calls for service in the month of July. Uh, not, not anything really of the ordinary to report there. Calls, you know, traffic, uh, vehicle and traffic calls are generally down as trying to uh be conscious of not being too too uh heavy-handed in light of COVID. Uh, I'll get to that in a minute. Just an update on the, I know there's, we had some members of the public come to a previous board meeting and express their concern about uh the, the driver who entered Main Street during the protest. That, that case has gone to court. There was an initial uh court appearance. Uh, but in terms of the department's role in that case, uh, the department is now uh essentially done with their investigation. And so if you're watching this uh now or retroactively and you have more questions about where the case is at, then you would want to continue to touch base with the district attorney's office, as I know some people have. Uh, so as far as I know, the case is not officially closed, but the initial court uh appearance has been held. Uh, we've also had some, a question came in over Facebook this uh past week regarding the policy of officers wearing masks during traffic stops. Apparently, there's been some passersby that have witnessed officers not wearing masks and expressed concern about that. Uh, with regards to that, uh, it certainly um is the state and uh chief's policy for officers to wear masks when engaging with the public in close proximity. In some cases, it's officers discretion while they are encouraged to wear their masks. Uh, if the officer is, you know, approaching a vehicle where they suspect they may need to utilize sense of smell to in suspicion of a D W Y or any other substance, um, chief has uh cautioned them to only do that when they absolutely feel it's necessary. But uh, there are cases where uh, in those cases where they wouldn't wear a mask. They're also when approaching cars, they are maintaining distancing by typically not actually exchanging licenses or documents with the driver. Uh, the officers are having the driver hold up those items so that they can be inspected from a distance to verify ownership of the vehicle and and registration and those things. So uh, if, if, uh, if, if there are members of the public that have seen officers not wearing masks, it it could be one of those situations. Again, it's, it's, it's encouraged, it's highly encouraged by chief. But there are times where, you know, he knows that the officers will have to use their discretion. Uh, so I just wanted to speak to that question that had come in. Uh, are we doing? Sorry. Uh, I'll wait to do cameras after this update up. Also talked, talking with some neighbors, uh, some residents and with chief, I know neighbors have talked to me, they've talked to the department. Uh, there's concern, but there's, it's not the first time there's been concern, but there's more concern that's been raised for the turn where Elm Street becomes Halsey. There are, there was another incident there with a driver that took out a couple mailboxes. Uh, it's a tight turn, very tight turn. There's no sidewalk there. Even going the speed limit at twenty-five, it can be a pretty dangerous turn if there's, when there's pedestrians there. Now, if you're, if you're going up Halsey, where it turns into Elm, there actually is a curb sign there with a recommendation of fifteen miles per hour. Uh, there is not one coming the other way. So I discussed with chief some options on how to address that, uh, whether it's signage or painting on the road. So would encourage board discussion on that. Any, if anyone has any concerns with putting up signage there, uh, neighbors might have concerns about signs being put in their front yards. Uh, but you know, I, I know there's, tends to be at least one incident a year on that turn, it seems, where a tree is taken out or a mailbox is taken out at that intersection right before Pennsylvania hits Halsey. So and, you know, I know I take that turn a few times a week and in the morning, there are a lot of pedestrians. So uh, chief is certainly in in support of adding signage there. And you're working with DPW to put up the appropriate signage. Uh, he thinks a recommendation type sign of ten miles per hour on the curb is the most appropriate thing. So if anyone has any opinions on that, uh, feel free to share now or in the immediate future. None? Okay.
It's, I mean, it sounds reasonable to me. I would just check in with whoever's yard the sign goes in.
Yeah, certainly. I was, I was, yeah, certainly I was planning on that. I mean, I think we do have some legal right-of-way access, but it would probably be the nice thing to do to also check in with someone who's, might get a sign in their front yard. Now, if we went with just painting the road, then you might not need a sign, but um, it's just a matter of is that the most appropriate thing for that turn?
Personally, my two cents, I'd go with a sign first. I think the road paint doesn't really stick around particularly well from what I've seen. Uh, so a sign might be a better, better play.
Okay. Uh, then lastly, uh, is one to bring attention, the, the discussion again on new body cameras for the police department. As we've discussed several, we've been several months without body cameras because they've broken. Uh, in the Dropbox, you'll see a couple documents I put in there. One is uh essentially the cost breakdown of two different options chief would like us to look at. He prefers the the more expensive option. We don't have to go into too many details. Uh, the, the other document is just a cost comparison to the Village of Keogah Heights. Uh, just to show that they're paying way more than chief wants to show. Uh, paying way more than chief wants to pay. Uh, and really what it comes down to is, you know, in terms of cheaper cost versus more expensive cost is the process in which the footage gets into the cloud and is accessible by the district attorney. Uh, going the more expensive route really takes the footage out of the hands of the administrative staff and the officers. It's a much more direct upload from camera to uh, an evidence cloud where the district attorney can access it directly. Chief kind of explained the process as of our previous body cameras and it's laborious and he is a little uncomfortable uh with regards to the liability that it could pose. You know, it takes a lot of liability out of us if there's less hands touching the body camera footage and as it's uploaded and put into the cloud. Uh, so that's kind of his main uh desire to have that approach. He feels uh running numbers that the amount of administrative work it takes to get the camera footage where it needs to be uh presently is five to six hours a week. And he thinks that it essentially the more expensive route pays for itself over time by not having to do that. So that's kind of the pitch, you know, the breakdown. It's uh, you know, it's about thirty thousand dollars, but that's paid over five years. Ten thousand dollars, about ten thousand the first year and then twenty thousand dollars over the remaining four years of of the deal. And then you, you'd essentially have the cameras and just continue to pay for the cloud storage after that. Now, the bigger question is where does that money come from? Uh, you know, chief has been looking into grants and other options for the body camera purchase and has not really come up with anything uh to date. So that's kind of where we're at, um, in terms of, you know, the options and what chief would like to do, you know, looking at the various line items of the police budget. You know, I don't see ten thousand dollars plus for equipment sitting anywhere. So I guess the question is, if we're not gonna get grant money, if we're not gonna get government money to buy these cameras, what are our ideas for paying for them? I think certainly uh in, in a, in a time of what I would call heightened scrutiny of police departments, you know, I, I don't, I don't like our officers out there. I don't think our community probably likes our officers out there without body cameras. Chief was just discussing a, a D W Y stop that Officer Covert had recently where she had to make an arrest. Uh, the, the driver was under the influence and very belligerent towards her. And, you know, he just said, those are the kind of interactions where, you know, it's really important in terms of the liability of the village and uh, and and everybody, you know, the, the driver included uh to, to have footage of that. And, you know, we, we don't. So uh, certainly a priority issue. But again, you know, Worden and you and and Vicky have thoughts on what we might do for paying for them, then I think that's probably what we need to discuss.
Vicky, what's in the uh police equipment reserve right now? You're muted.
I'm looking, okay, I'm looking it up right now, Worden, because that was my thought too. Give me two seconds.
Yeah, I think I remember looking at that before and it.
There should be several thousand dollars in there because uh Chief Reddy never used any, so. There is. Um, there's forty-six hundred dollars in there. But doesn't he have a budget line for equipment too?
Yeah, not, not enough from what I looked at.
Okay.
Even with that reserve as well?
Well, we were gonna put in another twenty-five hundred this year. Um, so we actually would be closer to seven thousand in the police equipment reserve. I think we could probably come up with other four for the first year. There's one or two grant things that I'm gonna send an email or two out about. But if we don't find it, then I think we can find, or if we don't get it, then I think we can find. What does he need for year one?
That's what I was.
Eleven, the eleven thousand four hundred and change. I think we can come up with that.
Yeah, so I mean, we started
And then we would just.
Fifty-five hundred in equipment. I don't know what's been, if anything's been tapped into there yet.
I mean, he's used some of it, of course. Now, I can get a better number for you this week.
Okay.
If that helps.
Yeah, I don't think we should wait. Um, we can come up with the eleven between the small, police small equipment account. We would only be four thousand short uh for year one. We would just need to uh remember to build in years two through five as a line item cost.
He also has a, an actual budget line called small equipment that has two thousand dollars in it. And he very rarely uses that.
Yeah, I saw that. I guess uh, I, I guess considering the reserves, you know, yeah, I, so I, I saw that and I knew we could probably add up to eleven thousand. I just didn't know how I don't know how comfortable are we just kind of draining those three line items for one purchase, but might not have a choice right now.
I mean, I, I can have a better number for you. I mean, I, I can have a better number for you by the end of the week or early next week, Keith.
Okay. Great.
Those are body cameras. How many, how many officers does that cover?
So I believe that would give us five cameras. And they would have to, uh, obviously they'd be sharing some would have to share and I believe they actually would have to log in and basically at the start of a shift, they log into their camera. Uh, each officer would have to log into the camera and establish that, you know, they were on duty with that camera now.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the reason for five, Deb, is um, not only redundancy, but we would rarely have more than five people on, you know, in a grassroots weekend kind of scenario. So we would always have one for everyone. Under most, most any circumstance we could think of.
And you have to have a backup anyway.
Right.
Yeah, Chief, I think Chief hinted at they might not even come in orders less than five, but at least is like a package like this with the software and cloud and everything. Okay, if that's all on that, then TACC, um, not much to report there. Whether it can happen with everything COVID related or not, the chamber won't be sponsoring or organizing Winter Fest this year. So I think I might've mentioned that before, but just as a reminder. I, I don't anticipate we'd probably have it anyway, but uh, if we were, we'd be looking for other organizations to take it on this year. And uh, there will be no crit race this year. I think probably everyone saw that update as well. And I think someone already mentioned before that it's being proposed that uh, there might do movie theaters in the farmer's market, the uh, Ulysses wreck in conservatory are looking to team up on that. Though uh, there would obviously be a limit to how many people could attend that, but that's an idea that could be in the works. So and I think that's up.
Any other uh, questions or comments for Keith? Okay, uh, Treasurer, Vicky, you're up.
Um, I have two service contracts in the Dropbox. One is for independent field service, which services our generators for uh, the DPW, the firehouse and the water plant. Um, that I would need your approval for Rorden to sign. And the all mode service agreement is for our office phones that we put in last year. It's time to renew that. Do you want to do this one at a time?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the generator service contract total is is for two visits per year, one annual inspection, one annual service. Uh, it's roughly, call it $500 per generator.
Correct.
Six generators is $3,000, just, uh, just shy of that. Um, so I would entertain a motion to authorize me to sign this uh, two-year. It's actually three-year, three-year contract um, with independent field service LLC for the maintenance of our generators.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any additional discussion or comment? Hearing none then? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, we absolutely need these at the sewer plant. No.
Any other comments? Uh, hearing none, then all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the other agreement is for Almo, these are the uh, new phones in the office, which had no idea how handy they would be because we got these pre-COVID, but now they um, proven to be quite useful and we need to forward calls and leave different voicemails and so forth. So the contract itself is lengthy. Looking for the bottom line number here.
Reading the uh, the letter at the top, it seems to suggest they recommend only the $200 or is I missing something more there?
Um, that's if we don't go with the service contract. The $200 is a software warranty of some kind. The service agreement is uh, $93.50 a month plus no, $93.50 a month for full coverage. So quick, who's got a calculator other than me?
93 what?
It's 1,122, $1,122 a year.
Wow.
There is an economy support for $71 a month, which is $852 a year.
And the difference between the two. That's what I'm trying to get to, sorry.
Yeah, same. Have, have you guys had any experience with this over the last couple of years while we've had it? I mean, is it?
We've had it less than a year.
Well, I mean, while we've had it, have you needed support at all?
I have not.
Okay, so.
I've had, I've had to call him a couple of times for just tech support stuff to teach me how to do something, but nothing major.
So the difference to me looks like um, business day versus 24-hour response.
Can we go without our phones for 24 hours? Or do we have to have it in the same day?
No, we don't need same day. There's also a difference. It looks like the economy. Has a different pricing structure if they need to get in the wire, which I don't know that they would need to.
Right. Wasn't it time and materials for the economy one or?
Yep. I would go with the economy. I can't see the overdriving need. It's not like we come to a complete standstill.
Right.
Think the only place that comes into play is with EMS because Almo does have their phone systems as well. But it shouldn't affect us like that.
I mean, it does, it's worth pointing out that their time and materials rate was like for 183 an hour or something. I mean, it was almost 200. So if we had them out once, that's that's the difference there, right? You know, hour and a half and we're at $300, so.
Yeah, but a wiring issue would go to Finger Lakes first. I, I don't know that Almo would get into that. Um, I think the economy coverage is $71 a month is, is fine. Unless anyone strongly objects.
I agree with you, Rorden.
I would entertain a motion then authorize me to sign the all mode service and support plan agreement for the business day monthly rate uh, for the economy coverage support at $71 a month.
So moved.
Um, I, I think the business, it's not business day, it's 24 hours.
Um, on the last page, it breaks them out. So 24-hour is a 24-hour on-call has a different rate than the next business day rate.
Oh, I read it exactly reversed. That's okay.
Okay, I'm tired.
We have a motion. Do we get a second?
A second.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, then all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, sorry.
Uh, any opposed? Okay, Vicky next.
Um, um, I finished and I apologize, but it was a little crazy last week. The 1920 budget modifications, they do not, if you guys want to review them, they do not need to be approved at this meeting. They can wait till the September meeting if you want to look them over. It's not going to affect anything. It just needs to be approved before the auditors get here in November.
Okay.
And that's for though, I mean, I don't know if like Ben and Keith weren't, haven't been here, but the budget modifications are basically balancing all budget lines as much as we can. So I take from one budget line and put it to another budget line if a budget line is over or, and if another budget line is under. And you'll see a lot of choose and froms. And because we're over budget on general fire and, or I'm sorry, general water and sewer, I also have to do the revenue side. Because the state will want to see that we actually had revenue, more revenue come in than anticipated to offset that negative balance.
Okay, so we will review that and approve it at the September meeting.
Okay, that's fine. Um, the last thing is, um, I would like permission from the board to finally close our capital project sewer account and deposit it into our debt reserve account. Um, I was going to ask for permission to close the water project one, two, but I just found out that we have one well cap. Is that what it's called, Debbie?
Yeah, the, yes.
That still needs to be done, that we can be reimbursed um, through EFC four. So that one can't close, but the sewer account has like $86.40 in it. Better to just, I just was going to get it off the books.
Yeah, I think that the sewer, getting the sewer off is a good idea. I want everybody to take note that the well, the water um, the water cap that she's talking about probably will not close until December. So take note that that'll be under whoever's closing out after I'm gone.
You think you're going to be gone by December?
I'm hoping there's an election soon.
So.
Six months.
Sorry.
I would entertain a motion to close the capital project sewer account.
So moved.
Second.
Any additional discussion?
Yay.
Better down.
Hearing none, then all in favor, please say aye.
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 Um, the last two things I have are, um, by I'm going to try and get the AUD completed um, this week or early next week. I have to get Dwayne to come down and help me with the indebtedness part. And my plan is by the next week to have uh, June and July closed. So you'll have good numbers for where we stand for this budget year.
Okay, good.
I think that's about it.
Any questions for Vicky? Okay, Tammy, any updates for us?
Um, so tax collection season without penalties officially is over. Um, right now, our outstanding balance is $83,180 or yeah, and 16 cents. Um, so we're about right where we were last year at this time. Um, the late notices will go out in the mail uh, the first of September, and then we usually get a pretty good run. Um, and then come October, we'll re-levee those to the, to the county. So we've got a little bit of time left to collect uh, at a lower penalty rate. Um, the rest of the month, I guess July was kind of about projects and um, deadlines and trying to keep things in order while we're all kind of working part-time from home and part-time from the office. Um, I think it's going okay. Um, I don't have any complaints. Uh, but other than that, it's kind of quiet. Um, still doing lots of Zoom meetings and this week, uh, my priority is FEMA. And I'm going to be uh, watching some of the webinars tomorrow morning. So yay.
Okay, any questions for Tammy?
Oh, and Nikon file training got canceled and I'm very upset about that.
Not as upset as.
Go ahead, Rorden. Go ahead.
What will they take away next?
Okay, so for, uh, they'll never do that. For my um, for my update, several, several items, including some that are not on the agenda. Um, I'll just touch on FEMA first since Tammy mentioned it. Um, we did apply for an ongoing disaster declaration funding through FEMA, which is supposed to be geared towards municipal spending uh, due to COVID-related response. Tammy and I had an initial call with the regional FEMA rep who actually made it sound like we may be able to call things like, and this I'm not 100% sure on this yet, but it sounds like things for instance, like EMS overtime could potentially count because the entire department uh, is geared to respond to a healthcare emergency if one were to arise, so overtime could be eligible. So we are we're working our way through that and that is what, uh, what Tammy's going to watch some instructional webinars, better heard than me, uh, on that this week. Hopefully, and then we'll have another follow-up call with the FEMA rep here in a few weeks and we will keep you posted. Um, also not on the list is I met for the very first time, I believe, in the history of the complex. Um, I met with several residents, about a dozen residents of Juniper Manor one earlier this week, uh, just to listen to some concerns that they have about various things. Um, they are all uh, very active and very engaged and pay attention to what's going on in the community around them. Uh, they have not had any COVID sicknesses in the complex throughout this time, thankfully. Uh, I was the there were all, including myself, there are only three of us at that meeting who are under the age of 80. Uh, and there was one very, very, very sharp 98-year-old lady. She'll be 99 in October. So it's, it's interesting. My my paternal grandparents uh, lived in Juniper from 1983 to 1985, shortly after it opened. Um, so I have childhood memories of the place, but I don't think I've been back since. And it's, it's very clear that unfortunately, I think the village is somewhat uh, over the last three decades, has somewhat neglected um, that facility and the folks there. Um, they love the village with a caring and a passion that you don't often see um, from, from anyone, even village residents, uh, and they want to, they want to feel included. Uh, they certainly have plenty of opinions about many things. Um, so I'm hoping that going forward, whether it's myself or someone else from the board, I'm, I'm hoping that we can um, make it a regular occurrence where we meet with not only the residents whether it's myself or someone else from the board, I'm, I'm hoping that we can, um, make it a regular occurrence where we meet with not only the residents, but also property management, uh, make sure that they have, uh, make sure they have what they need. I mean, there's nothing quite like a pandemic where we're all forced to stay at home for some period of time to make you realize that you want to make sure folks have what they need where they live. So, um, that's something that I hope we'll be able to build on, uh, going forward. Uh, to the items that I have on the agenda, just prior to, so it was actually the week before St. Patty's Day, Tammy got a letter from DEC, which said that they did not have any, um, concerns or hold up on our ability to do repair work on the retaining wall at the famous Greg Street footbridge. They just asked that we not do any work in April, because that was trout season. However, they did require us to check with Army Corps of Engineers about whether they required an application of some, some type in order to do work in or around the waterway. Army Corps did require an application, which we submitted around St. Patty's Day, and then everything shut down. Uh, we received subsequently to that notification from Army Corps that they would not entertain our application without design plans, which include, uh, project costs, engineering, uh, elevation studies and so forth. I'm sorry?
It's my other computer talking. Sorry.
I asked Tammy to request of Army Corps an in-person meeting, so that they could see that the scope of work is not particularly large. Um, they, uh, firmly denied that request and said that our initial application is now dead until we get the engineering that they require. So that is something that we will probably have to bring MRB into, which means getting a quote for their scope of services before we move forward. I'm not, I'm not shuttering the project by any means, but I think it's gonna have to find its way to a burner behind the back burner because of a few other things, uh, going on. Uh, including the next item, which is somewhere around that same time, uh, based on some work actually that Keith had started about a year ago. Uh, you'll recall, we had been approached, uh, you know, Keith approached Assemblywoman Lipton's office or someone from her office contacted us and said that she may have some earmarked funds. Did we have a use for it? And at the time, we had said we did not. Last fall, we went back and said, well, yes, actually, we do. We could take care of some drainage issues throughout the village, uh, if we were to get this money. Just prior to, uh, COVID shutdowns, we received notification that we had been tentatively awarded some project money. Uh, and we had to submit a formal request to the Assembly Ways and Means Committee, which we did a week prior to St. Patty's Day. Um, somewhere in April or May, I reached out to Lipton's office to ask for an update. They said that everything looked good. Um, it was with Ways and Means, and actually Ways and Means contacted Tammy for some additional information uh, in between that timeframe, which we got to them. So then as of April or May, the word was that it was with Ways and Means and everything looked good. Uh, last month, so this would be, uh, end of June, early July. Uh, you will, you'll probably all recall that Seth Murtaugh from Ifa, Common Council, uh, works uh, in Assemblywoman Lipton's office. Uh, he had taken some time off to campaign for her seat. So he put me in touch with someone else in her office. I contacted her last month to ask where we stood, and she said she did not have an update for me. And then out of the blue, a week and a half ago, Tammy got a notification from DASNY, which is the Dormitory Authority of the State of New York, which said, congratulations on your award. Here's what we need. So that's a long-winded way of saying it looks like we have pending, uh, pending a lot of paperwork. Um, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars coming our way for drainage work in the area of Prospect Street, Seneca Road between Prospect and King, uh, and Seneca Street in between Bradley, McClellan Side and Congress Street. So we are in the process, and Deb mentioned this earlier, we're in the process of having a dusty get-together, firm quotes on materials, uh, contract excavators where needed, uh, and so on, and then we will submit that to DASNY. It looks like we will have to do Seeker, something they require for everything. So we will, uh, we will likely need to do a Seeker review this fall. Uh, hopefully that money can be put to work. Uh, if not, this fall, depends how, how early the frost comes, I suppose, but we will, um, keep you posted on, on those, on that progress. Uh, any questions on either of those pieces at the moment? Uh, the third item I wanted to discuss is, um, we had, coming into this fiscal year, so fiscal year started June one. Uh, we had determined that we were going to hold off on pre-planned, uh, raises for employees for the first quarter, not knowing what the budgetary shortfall might look like, uh, to the village. Uh, first quarter is over at the end of August, so I wanted to revisit the discussion about whether to reinstitute or reinstate those raises, uh, in terms of the, the finances. Uh, Vicky had talked a little bit about finishing up the budget modifications, but if we look at it, and I'm just pulling it up here. If we look at, um, the May close, looks, it appears, and we won't know for sure till the audit is done, but it appears that the village has a net, um, surplus, if you will, of somewhere around three hundred thousand dollars from the, from the year that just closed. Um, property taxes were a concern that I had, but as Tammy mentioned, we only have eighty-three thousand dollars in delinquencies. Uh, last year, we had eighty-one thousand five hundred. Uh, and the prior year, we were over a hundred thousand in delinquency. So we're right on track. We have not seen any of the economic fallout of COVID affect our property taxpayers, fortunately. Um, sales tax revenue on an annualized basis, we budgeted three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars for sales tax at the current pace, including, um, June and July. We don't have August, no, August checked yet. But June and July, we're on a pace for about three seventy-five to three eighty. So we're gonna be a little short on sales tax unless there's a major rebound somewhere, um, but not, not dramatically so. Uh, it's dramatic compared to where we were had COVID not occurred in March and April. We would have finished last year with something like four hundred and forty thousand in revenue. So from four forty to three eighty is a big drop, but from what we budgeted of three ninety-five to three eighty is certainly manageable. So I am more comfortable now with the notion of reinstating, uh, reinstating raises effective, uh, September, pending what, what you all think. Thoughts, comments?
So it's strange to me that I, I agree, actually. I mean, it's strange, because I think, um, the towns and obviously the county and every other level of government seems to be suffering financially in a way that we just haven't quite experienced. So I, I agree, I'd be open to that. Although I'm sort of shocked that I'm saying that, but.
I would agree that I would be open to it as well. I think that we may have to revisit. Uh, my, my worry is that, that we're gonna see it delayed later. So that we may go ahead with this year, but next year, see the results of, of what we don't actually have a view to today. Because sales tax, no matter what our percentage is, is gonna go down, just given, just given what's happened for six months out of the year. So I think currently, um, getting through this year, um, providing that is, would be okay. Um, but it, we really, uh, let's remember that it's probably gonna be our harder decision next year.
Sorry if I missed this in, in kind of walking through the numbers. The, do we have a sense of what we're kind of expecting to see over this next year versus what we budgeted for? I wasn't quite sure if that was something you pointed out there.
So, so it's, it's, it's hard to see if you can't see the numbers on paper. So you have to think about where the sales tax revenue was headed going into the end of the year, ending May. So we were on pace. We had budgeted for that year. We had budgeted three hundred and ninety-five thousand in sales tax. We were on pace for about four hundred and forty thousand. The first sales tax shortfall check actually came in June, because June is reflective of April's sales. So it's a two-month lag. March sales, remember, things shut down mid-March. So March sales, March sales tax collected by a vendor is paid to the state in April, and the municipalities get paid their cut in May. So the May check reflective of March sales was down fractionally, but not much. So we actually ended the year, I forget, four hundred and twenty, four hundred and thirty thousand in sales tax revenue. June and July's rece, received checks were down as much as you can imagine. June's check, which was reflective of April, I think was down thirty-five percent year over year, something like that. Um, July, which is reflective of May, started to bounce back a little bit. Um, so it was down, I think fifteen percent, which is in line with the numbers Ann gave us. And now we will see, at the end of the month, we'll get the August check, which is June sales. Uh, and we'll see how much that rebounds. Guessing as to how that's gonna play out is purely anecdotal. I know that the largest sales tax generator in Tompkins County, uh, is one particular automotive dealership chain, of which we are all familiar. Uh, and it sounds like anecdotally, they have been extremely busy in June, July and August, uh, which is reflected in their almost empty, uh, car lots. They don't have much inventory, because it's all been sold. So if we see that kind of a rebound, then we'll just, it's anybody's guess what happens this fall and winter. I'm glad that we, so basically, the way we, way we budgeted sales tax for this year we're in now was to hold the estimate flat from the previous year, which is actually a large reduction from what we actually experienced. I think that I'm still comfortable when we look at the surplus from year end. I think we're in an okay place to be able to pay, to be able to, uh, not retroactively, but to be able to reinstate the raises effective with this first payroll cycle in September.
So I, I just want to say this out loud, because I think I get where you're coming from, and it seems to make sense, is that, um, we projected for flat growth, which buffers against whatever unknown will happen over the next four quarter, the next three quarters of the year. Um, but we're being somewhat conservative there already, plus the, the additional, um, revenue that we're, we're seeing at the end of the year, that the surplus that we have, kind of mix those two together, and, and we're feeling like we're in a pretty good spot overall. And as you pointed out, property taxes are, are seeming to be in line with kind of regular trajectories, and put all that all together, seems like we're, we're in a good spot for reinstating those, uh, pay raises.
Yes, exactly. And I think that if anything, um, you know, we look at three percent over this, over payroll, uh, for the course of the year, it's not a gigantic number. I mean, it's not nothing, but it's, it's not, it's not gigantic. So I think that between, um, my, my big concern was actually not sales tax. My big concern was the property tax. I didn't know what was gonna happen. You know, the levy was over a million for the first time. Um, if we had some kind of a crazy, you know, fifty percent delinquency rate kind of situation, then, then that would be a cash flow issue for us. Um, but because the property taxes are in line with where we are every year, it's actually mostly the same folks every year who, who choose to have it re-levee'd under their town and county taxes in January for tax purposes. So all of that seems very normal. Sales tax is still a wild part, but I think we can absorb that. Uh, we would not have been able to absorb some type of a, a massive property tax hit.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, this makes sense to me, so I'm, I'm in favor of reinstating.
I tend to say that the departments have been really, really good about not spending unless they absolutely have to. I can tell what invoices are coming in and how much.
We're still under the, um, I've instructed the department heads, we're still under the spending restrictions that I imposed back in March. So pretty much all spending has to be approved by me. Um, you know, with the exception of the, of the day-to-day, utility bills and whatnot. So we're gonna try to keep that in place. We're gonna try to keep any discretionary spending to a minimum if possible, until we see what's on the other side of all of this. But I think the raises, um, I think the raises can be reinstated without an issue.
Roden, are you also gonna discuss reserves?
Yes, so I, we had, when we were finalizing our budget, we had talked about potentially, um, holding back some funds from some of the reserves if necessary. The only two that I would consider doing that with is the Village Office Building Reserve and the Sidewalk Reserve. It's a total of ten thousand dollars between the two. I don't know that I want to mess around with fire, EMS or police, um, or DPW equipment. I think we're okay there. But I think we might, and, and there's no timeline under which we have to put money in the reserve. So we can, uh, we can hold off and see how things go before we commit that cash to those accounts, Vicky.
Okay, well, no, I mean, in September, you'll know more if you have June and July closed.
Right.
And the, and August, uh, sales tax. Okay, okay, great, thank you.
So we don't need a resolution for it, but if the board is, um, supportive, then Tammy, if, where Tammy go? Tammy, you can go ahead and plan on, uh, payroll adjustment for everyone, um, based on how we budgeted. So that'd be three percent across the board, except for DPW.
Beginning.
Uh, whatever the first payroll cycle is in September. Uh, last item, I think, last item for me under my report is, believe it or not, it is deer management time again already. And so there is a resolution, not a resolution, there is a seven dot G dot four in the Dropbox is the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Trummersburg Deer Management Program Summary, uh, which I will need a resolution to adopt. This will be forwarded on the DEC along with our annual application, so that the, um, the both, uh, the participants, they're not hunters. The participants can begin, uh, September one. It'll run September first through March thirty-first of next year. Same sites, same locations, mostly the same participants as previous years. I believe this will be year number eight. And we've taken somewhere between an average of fifty to sixty deer a year, so between three and four hundred deer have been taken since the program started. Uh, by any estimates, there are still anywhere from seventy-five to a hundred and twenty-five deer within the village, so maybe we still got work to do. Uh, so I would entertain a motion to adopt the Village of Trummersburg Deer Management Program for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? Hearing none, then, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So that's it for me, unless anyone has a question. So that's it for me, unless anyone has a question or anything that I went over. Item number eight on the agenda is old business. We have a Village Hall weatherization quote, Ben, if you'd like to take that.
Um, and I apologize, Vicki, I probably should have highlighted this because I think we would need a permissive referendum for this one as well. We chatted last month about putting heat in the bathrooms in preparation, preparation for finally shutting down the boiler in the Village Hall. After we approved those, Tom Myers, uh, reminded me that we hadn't put in, uh, in that quote, additional heat in the meeting rooms. Um, so I asked him to take a look at that and see if he felt that that was necessary because that is a bit warmer than the rest of the house, the rest of the building. He did still recommend that we look into that. So, uh, he has gotten an additional quote from the previous, um, the company we'd gone with the first time around, uh, that's in the Dropbox for Andrew Fendrick. Um, so that quote is, uh, for fourteen twenty-three, an additional time and materials to replay or add additional electric heat in those two restrooms in the meeting room, in the back meeting room space. So I'd like to move, uh, that we approve up to, I'll say, an additional fifteen hundred from the building improvement preserve, sorry, I care for the, the actual second one there.
Village Hall Building Reserve.
Yeah.
We really need to do that, can we just take, I mean, it's up to you guys, of course. But what about just the repairs, the budget line for that?
No, I'd rather take it from the reserve.
You'd rather take, okay, that's fine, that's fine, okay.
Yep, no, and there's not too much of a rush on this, obviously, because hopefully it's not.
Okay, I'll do the.
Gonna get too cold.
Yeah, I'll send the permission for our friend to Tammy tomorrow.
All right, appreciate it. So, yep, so I'll move up to fifteen hundred for, uh, the additional heat in the meeting room bathrooms.
I'll second. We're a motion and a second, and that was subject to permissive referendum. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, then all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Anything else on the weatherization front?
I, I hope that that's all it, that I think the last part will be getting that heater out of there. Once we've got the, oh, like, the, sorry, the, the boiler out of there, once we've got the electric heat and the final, um, heating, uh, insulation underneath the police department. And I think DBW can manage that last piece, so it might be, we might be at the tail end of this never-ending project.
Did we find out, or did you find out anymore about emergency backup? If we pull the boiler and we have a longer term.
I haven't looked in, I haven't looked into that. Maybe that's something you and I can chat about offline. Uh, I, I think I've got a couple of questions around that. I wouldn't say that the boiler right now is a good backup anyhow, um, but we should have some sort of backup. Um, the question is kind of which scenarios do we want to run through and what does that look like? So I think that would be a next piece is to, to look at some sort of additional generator. If we don't feel like what we have is, is sufficient. I suppose if we're out of, or out of electricity, we're probably using all those generators anyhow. So we should have a conversation about that.
Get Truman.
Uh, next item under old business is Village, Village Website Refresh, Ben, that's you again.
Yes, so, um, last month we had talked about, uh, looking into refreshing the website. Um, it's been about four plus years on that. Um, I think it could use an improvement and we've been chatting about, um, the fact that it's kind of the, the face of the village, whether we'd like it to be or not. That's where people land and, uh, I think it deserves a little bit more for what we're trying to do to promote the village, um, to bring people in. So I've gotten three quotes. Oh dear, I didn't actually look at this, how this came out when I exported it from Google. But anyhow, I've got four quotes, there's a, a spreadsheet in the Dropbox under eight B. I think most of this is still works, except the examples is, is not great. But anyhow, uh, the, the four I went with, were, I think municode was the one that most, uh, that, that Deb had, had mentioned that some recent, some local places have been using, I think, could be wrong on that one. Anyhow, uh, municode, Proud City, Town Web and Finger Lakes Websites, uh, were the four that I found that got back to me quickly with quotes. I tried to look at them, they're, they all kind of structure their quotes separate differently. Most of them have an upfront component followed by a monthly, uh, component afterwards. Uh, the one exception there is the Finger Lakes Websites, which is just a monthly component. So to try and kind of put them all apples to apples as best I could, uh, put them together as what would it cost over the course of four years? And, and in that, you can see in the spreadsheet, the spread is from about a little over six thousand for four years, up to almost twelve thousand for four years. So kind of a bit of an interesting spread. The, man, this is, this is, I apologize for how this came out. Uh, there's a lot in the, in the, um, features that is not really clear, uh, maybe I, I don't know. Anyhow, um, I'll, I'll point out that the, the kind of biggest difference between the various ones comes down to how much of a custom design you get. Um, they all have payment acceptance, they all do their own hosting and maintenance and updates. Uh, they're all quite good about, uh, accessibility for people who need screen readers or, or various other types of assistance, um, which is an important component for us being a government. They're all have like mobile friendly templates. The biggest difference is, uh, all of these, except for Finger Lakes Website, is really a templated build. Um, so it, all their posts, all of the, the websites are going to look roughly the same. I think you obviously can pick your own logo and, and kind of color scheme. But basically the layout is pretty standard, or maybe they've got a couple of layouts and you kind of pick one, which one works for you. Uh, if we want to go a little more, um, customized or kind of fit for purpose, then the Finger Lakes Website would be probably a better bet. That gives us, uh, it's kind of, it's at the nine thousand six hundred dollar level, so kind of a little bit in the middle between kind of the high and the low. But it comes with that custom design, which is pretty standout compared to the rest. And it doesn't have an upfront cost, which can be compelling piece. So we don't have to lay out a few thousand dollars or up to four thousand dollars or, or more, um, just to kick it all off. Plus they're local, which I, I think, you know, has a little bit of an interest on my side. So those are the, the four quotes that we got. I, I can continue to talk more with these folks. I could probably bring someone in for a meeting, you know, to, to talk to the board. If we wanted to keep kind of drilling deeper, we could pick one here. Kind of open it up to see where people's heads are at.
Thoughts, comments, questions for Ben?
Would we get rid of municipal pay if we went to this?
I think it's certainly an option. Um, I think it'd be up to us then to decide if we want to take that option. The payment, uh, seems part of the package, so it, it would in some ways be interesting to look at how that would play out, seeing as we could probably save on the municipal side. But I don't remember if we have a, it, it's just completely covered by the fees.
Yes.
I mean, that's how it's going to be here too, so it, it's kind of, it's really up to us, I think, at that point. If we're comfortable with municipal pay, we, and we're used to it, then I don't see a need to really change that. And I think I'd have to, I'd have to check, certainly with Finger Lakes Website, we could, I'm sure they could put in the, the municipal pay form or something. I can't remember, is there a form on our site or do we link over to their site? Do you remember how that works? We link, then we could just, we can continue to have that link if that works for us. Or we could investigate how their payment works if we felt like it was an improvement.
I'd imagine it would probably be cheaper, or I guess it doesn't matter really if you're paying, if the transaction pays for the cost, so it doesn't really matter, but.
Yeah, we could see if it's a savings to, to the resident, to the, the payer, if that was interesting for us, you know, weighing that with obviously the, the work to switch over and relearn a system and so forth.
Town of Hopewell needs to be a little more imaginative with their banner image, but that's, uh, that's not the web designer's fault. Yeah, I liked, um, I like the Finger Lakes Website one, but of course that's the most expensive.
Well, it's more expensive monthly, but it doesn't have that upfront cost. So it kind of ended up being middle of the road. Municode was definitely more expensive.
Oh, right.
Especially because it, that's not even a custom design. If you want a custom design on top, it's another thirty-five hundred.
The maintenance on a customer, is the maintenance is easy on custom as it would be in a template. That's, you know, I, I actually like the Town Web one, but that's a side point. I don't care one way or the other, but really, um, I understand that the other ones are built off of, of common templates. Does that make the maintenance and the update from the, from our side, the monthly, what's within our, all of the stuff, the calendar and all that other stuff? Is it easier in the template or, um, does it require, um, more professional help, um, on the custom pages?
Yeah, my impression is that it's, um, they're all kind of about the same. They're, they're, you know, you go into a web, a, a, a editor view and you add in kind of what your new content is. And then from there, the design is kind of applied on top. I don't, um, but I could, I could try and get more information on that side. Most of them seem like they're kind of your standard content management system, kind of not unlike what we have, like a WordPress thing that we have now.
Yeah, I think templates are, are gimmies. The only one that I had a question on this is actually the custom one. Would it be as easy to maintain it there?
Yeah, I guess I'd be curious what the, with the backend content management system is that FLX uses. Personally, I prefer custom just because it gives us more flexibility. If we want to tell the designer to do X, Y or Z, I also definitely like no upfront cost. Does that two hundred dollars a month for FLX, does that, does that cover everything? That, that covers design, maintenance?
Yeah, that's basically kind of the way I, I was led to believe. It's kind of like you're keeping them on, just on retainer, like they're, they're always available there for, yeah, support, maintenance, updates, um, if we need to spin up a new page or something. It's kind of just keeping them around, um, and then we can reach out as, as we need.
Good. Any other thoughts?
Yeah, I, I just want to jump in quick. I, it sounds like the rest of the board is, is pretty convinced that we need this sort of a facelift for our web presence. And I just, um, I want to express my feeling that I, I don't feel like we really do. I'm not sure how much traffic our website actually gets outside of being used as a, an informational resource. I don't know, may, is, is, if I am wrong in that regard, I would, I would love to hear about it. But I, I do have some reservations about, um, spending this money in the context that we're in, on purely aesthetic endeavors. So I just, I just want to throw that out there. I think if, if others feel strongly, I'll happily defer being not necessarily an aesthetic minded person myself. Um, and I'm sure there's functionality going on here that I'm, I'm just not understanding. But I just wanted to throw out that, that sort of feeling and, and hear a response, I suppose.
I, I'm happy to kind of take goodbye two cents on where I'm coming from. I do think, I think the aesthetics are important. In that, you know, our, the, the look and feel kind of reflects how people are going to perceive the village, uh, who aren't, who are from, from the outside kind of looking in. I see it as kind of, I'd, I'd rather there be kind of a, a, a chamber website presence that was kind of the default. Um, but if you look up Truumsburg, at least from, in my experience, it typically, that's much lower down on the page. And like Village of Truumsburg is, is the landing page. So part of this, I think, in, in my chats with, with Rorden and Keith a bit, have been around, what can we do to kind of improve the standing of the village as a destination, as a place to move, as kind of a focus point? And I think this, the look and feel does make an impact there. I also would like to see the functionality side improve. I think we can do a lot more to make this a, a, a center of real valuable, useful information and finding ways to in it, radiate more information. I think, you know, Ben, you had sent around that link, that list of, you know, places, uh, openings in the village that we want to try and get people engaged in, um, for, for volunteer opportunities. That doesn't say that we couldn't do it currently in the, the current website. But I think there's a lot of opportunity with sites that we could be enabling and working through. That's just difficult with the current setup. The current setup, I'll also say, I mentioned this last month, like it, it really is not secure anymore. It's not up to date. It's got a lot of vulnerabilities that need addressing. It's not accessible, um, in a way that we really are required to by law and, and should, just as a general best practice to, for people that use screen readers and, and other tools for web accessibility. I think there's a lot that's, we're kind of leaving on the table. So I think it, it, for me, it's kind of the whole package of moving off of something kind of somewhat one-off custom-built four years ago that we haven't really invested in. And, and moving to one of these services that is a little more all encompassing. And we can work on the content, um, and worry less about the maintenance and the accessibility and kind of hitting all those other pieces.
But there is underlying that a sort of functional shift to, to rather than just being a landing page for information when you want to look up the zoning law, play more of an active role. All right, I, I can get behind that. I like, I like that. All right, thank you.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think that's our opportunity and I'd like to, um, you know, yeah, lean into that. So if we can, if we can start here and especially, I mean, for me, that's kind of the, the benefit of the FLX side is having someone, you know, that we can kind of email throughout the year and say, hey, we want to spin up this, this particular page for this thing or that thing. And, um, I think there's a lot that we can do there to come up with new ideas of how do we make it more of a, a real landing page and usable by not just residents, but tourists and people looking to move here and so forth. Yeah.
Okay, I like that idea. Thank you for, for laying that out, I appreciate that.
Yeah, for me, it's a, it's really about potential and usability. I mean, I think we are putting a lot of time into revisionings and comprehensive plans and looking at the future of the village. I think you need a outward facing web presence that matches that future vision. Uh, I, I don't think our current website does that. And I think, you know, in terms of usability, you know, I, I don't find our current website to be overly intuitive. I don't think that's really anybody's fault. It's just, it's an older design. It doesn't inspire creative content. I'm not even sure it could handle it if we wanted to inject more creative content. You know, and everything from now live streaming meetings, you know, to, um, you know, sharing more content department by department. You know, even at a low, small local level, information is becoming increasingly digital, we all know that. But I, you know, I, I do, you know, if we're looking to garner interest in, you know, families that are looking to flee urban areas because they're going to be working remotely from now on. They do a Google search and they hit that website. I, I don't think they're going to get too inspired. So I, I, you know, is that a huge driver in the next year or two? I, I, I don't know, uh, but I think it's important to have a better look. And I think, you know, I think a website should match the time and energy that I think this board is putting into its work. Uh, you know, I think there's a lot of great things happening around the village right now. And we should probably be communicating more of that stuff. And I think we need a better, a better web mechanism by which to do that. So again, I mean, the, the thing is, So again, I mean, the, the thing is, you know, we can get better infrastructure. Then it comes down to having the time and bandwidth to produce that content, you know, and that's, but, you know, I'm willing to roll the dice that I think we can, we can do that and that we'll be motivated to do that if we have a better look. Because I don't, I just don't think their current website does us justice. You know, we're, we're a beautiful place. We are surrounded by wonderful agriculture and have some great local businesses and beautiful landscapes and that just doesn't come through.
Keith, I, I agree with, with both you and Ben and, and, but a little bit different than I would tell you that, that it's like, you know, somebody has, has a flip phone versus an iPhone and it's, it's apparent. I mean, that's the difference of what we're looking for. I mean, you want, you just need to stay current because all it's going to do is age you faster. That's my two cents.
I think the security applications are, are practical concern, the backend security of website. There's another thing which I haven't mentioned to anyone because it got backburnered somewhere around March. Something happened in March. It kind of slowed everything down. But a conversation I had with Guy several months ago about all of our dozens or hundreds of local laws throughout time, all these different pieces. I've been, I've been looking into migrating everything over to what's called a village code. And so there's a company out of Rochester by the name of Ecode, and they will actually codify everything. All, take all of your hundred and well, 2022 will be 150 years. Take all of your local laws and put them into a searchable code format. And a lot of municipalities are moving in that direction. It's not cheap. I think there's grant money available for it. So I was going to start looking into that. But once that, if, if we go in that direction at some point, once that's done, then we've got to have a place to store. So a well-maintained website that allows for residents or anyone else to, to search all of our local laws in code format, I think will be useful to some people, not useful to others, but something worth, worth considering.
There ought to be an awful lot of consideration there because you know you're going to find laws that shouldn't be on the books.
Right.
So where, where do we want to go from here? I'm, I'm hearing people kind of leaning toward FLX websites. I want to see, see if that's where we want to proceed. I could have someone come, probably join our September meeting and give a little show and tell, or we could just jump to a contract. Where, where are people headed? Where's your people's heads at?
I'd like to see a contract proposal. I don't think I need show and tell unless anyone else does. I mean, we all spend enough time on the internet to kind of have an idea of, of what, what's involved. I'll be interested to know what the backend user access system and mechanism is.
Yeah, I, I think it's somewhat custom. I feel like I had maybe screenshots for that, but I'll, I'll definitely get you the details on that.
Then I think if we have, if we have a, a contract to consider as well as some more of that kind of user and end user detail for our September meeting, then we should be able to, I don't see a reason why we wouldn't be able to at least make a decision.
Sounds good.
Okay. Anything else on the website? That takes us to new business. Got some old AC window units. We need to decide what to do with. One recommendation was the reuse center. Before we do anything with them, we would need to declare them of no further use to the village. I do have a question about, well, we have to be careful with gifting to individuals. I do have a question about, is there any, is there a local organization or outfit that we might ask whether they would take them and distribute them to members of the community? I don't know if that's directly in the gem shops wheelhouse, but something like that, so an organization like that. I don't really have anyone specifically in mind, but I wondered about something more specifically local than than the reuse center. Any, any thoughts on any of that?
Would the school have any recognition of home needs since people are, were doing school at home?
What about Juniper Manor?
Juniper's lobby already paying dividends.
So the Junipers, I'm not sure about. I don't know if those window units are practical for some of those windows per se. I could ask. It would probably be a, it would most likely be a property management company decision. I don't know that the residents can get to decide.
I know that that's what they use. The ones that have AC, I know that the ones that have AC, the residents at Juniper that have AC have window units. They're all window units.
Well, I could find out. I could find out if they could make use of them. I could also find out if Gem Shop would have a way to distribute those or any other organizations we want to reach out to on that.
Office of the Aging, Women's Advocacy Center, Tompkins County Community Action.
Except that those three you mentioned are not local to Truansburg. So I'm, I'm very interested.
But I'm sure they have clients in Truansburg. I mean, I know that the organizations are big.
I don't know that we will get the discretion to determine that if we give them to those organizations. Village taxpayers paid for those AC units. So if we can keep it local with the village, that would be better.
The robotics teams could use them for parts.
Those kids could probably get a robot to the moon with those parts.
Shop class.
Well, let me, let me check with the Junipers and I'll email Karen. Karen Powers. See what the Gem Shop mandate is as far as.
Yeah, maybe the ladies at the Christmas Bureau, maybe Nancy Zaler would have, you know, data on families that may be local.
Okay. Anything else for new business? Then let's move on to paying some bills. We've got abstracts in the Dropbox. Abstract number three of this fiscal year. Starting with a general fund abstract in the amount of $150,779.22. Everybody able to pull that up?
Yeah, I moved that we pay this abstract.
A second.
Any discussion? Comments, questions, concerns? Couple of minor typos here and there. I'll pick on Vicky about that some other time. There's no additional discussion on the general fund abstract. All in favor of paying that amount, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Your EMS billing abstract in the amount of $30,138.77.
Do we pay this abstract? 30,000, whatever it was, sorry.
138.77. There's a motion and a second. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, then all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Have a water fund abstract in the amount of $123,881.82.
I move that we pay the water abstract for 123,881,82.
Second.
Any questions, comments, discussion?
What's the, the pump repair? Is that what that is?
Yeah. Yeah, it's a repair pump, I believe.
I think that from the the Boy Scout camp, they, we, we had to send it.
It's the permissive referendum that we did several months ago.
Right. That sounds familiar.
And I just was hoping you all could read French.
Yeah.
Trying to get them done on time, you know? I will go in and correct these.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, then all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? We have a sewer fund abstract totally $14,469.79.
We pay the sewer abstract $14,469.79.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, then all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Last but not least is trusted agency totaling $31,196.7.
I'm approved that we pay trust and agency for the amount listed. Dated.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that takes us to item number 11, which is our second public comment period. Don't see any members of the public unless Mark left, unless Anne has anything she, you would like to add before we move on.
The only thing I was texting to Tammy is the food pantry is a possible option for the air conditioners that they might know people.
Okay. Good. Thank you for that. So seeing no other members of the public, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss a couple of different personnel issues and one potential legal contractual issue.
I move second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are in executive session and I am going to end the stream.